Are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. We're going to call a meeting of the Board of Supervisors back to order. We just finished a lunch break and we're now on item number 20. This is for possible action to appoint three members to the Airport Authority, one to fill the FBO position, one to fill the manufacturing position, and one to fill the citizen-in-large position, each for a term expiring 2020. As usual, I have a disclosure to make, and I'm going to make the disclosure and then abstain from voting and leave the dais. The disclosure is as follows. NRS 281A 420.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from participating when I have a disqualifying conflict. My wife, nope, I'm running the wrong one there.
Your wife serves in the [inaudible].
I've got conflicts all over the place. In my private commitment, I am retired, I'm of counsel for the law firm of Kemfer Crowley, and when I'm retired, Mr. Takeus practices law in that firm, and I consider Mr. Takeus a close, personal friend. And also, I'm very mindful of the fact that this board appoints the board members, which we're doing this afternoon, who in turn appoint counsel to the Airport Authority. And so, I believe that a person in my position would be affected by this relationship. As such, I will abstain from participating on this matter, and I will leave the dais and turn the gavel over to the Mayor Protem.
And then Brad, you have a disclosure?
Yes, I also have a disclosure. NRS 281A .420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from participating when I have a disqualifying conflict. In my private capacity, I am a partner in the real estate brokerage firm, NAI Alliance Carson City. NAI has active listings of properties with through-the-fence access to the airport. However, this is not a disqualifying conflict, as my action here today to vote on appointing a member to the Authority will not have an effect on my private business, nor my private business have an effect on the matter before us today.
All right. So Nick, we have the manufacturer person that is applying for that, Michael Golden is here, correct?
For the FBO, ma'am.
For the FBO?
Correct.
Okay.
Michael Golden is here.
Michael, would you like to come up and just introduce yourself, since you're the Go ahead and sit, make yourself comfortable, and then press the button on the microphone. So just tell us a little bit about yourself, and then I'll leave it open to the board if they would like to ask questions.
Love to ask, love for you if you could ask questions. And Mayor Protem Bunkowski, honorable members of the Board of Supervisors, my name is Michael Golden. I own a number of businesses and have a number of ground leases out at the airport. Been there for 10 years as a business owner. We employ a number of people out there at the airport. I'm a pilot, aircraft owner, former corporate executive. I used to sit on the Board of Directors of a large FBO, and also was president of the Truckee Tahoe Airport District in Truckee, California. So it gives you a little bit of background.
Well, you have a longstanding position in this field, so that's great. And so my question to you is, what is your vision for the Carson City Airport in the next four years or the next 10 years?
We wouldn't have made the investment as a company, and we are a family-run business, I want to make that very clear. It's not a corporate entity where LLC, all members of the LLC are members of my family. We would not have made the significant investment that we have at Carson City Airport if we did not want to grow that business. There is a tremendous opportunity for Carson City Airport due to the politics, if you will, at Reno. And much of our growth has come from the Reno market, because the pilots and aircraft owners have been discouraged, if you would, economically, from continuing to base their aircraft at Reno. And we see a great opportunity for growth, for additional employment, you know, for our employees, and to bring more business and more tax base into the airport.
Brad?
Good afternoon, Michael. I have a similar question for you. I'd like you to drill down a little farther into the answer that you just gave. What are your specific thoughts on the best development ideas at the airport, either within the fence or adjacent to the airport with through-the-fence access? Is that additional hangars? Is it FBOs? Or is it manufacturers that have access to the airport, or a combination thereof?
Let me address that. One of the matters you touched on is kind of a hotspot for me, which is through-the-fence access. I am not a big fan of through-the-fence access at any airport. I was when I initially came to Carson City and saw some of my acquaintances, people I did business with, had through-the-fence access. And I think there's a benefit to the manufacturers to have that, but for airport businesses to have through-the-fence access, in my opinion, is a very bad idea. It really cuts the airport out of the revenue stream, for one thing. But when you ask about more hangars, what kind of development? I used to be a real estate developer at one point in my life. And airports are a changing marketplace, and they've evolved over the years. And if you look at airports around the country, general aviation airports, they don't just have hangars or FBOs. They try to increase their revenue stream and their profit center by getting creative with their land use when they have land. Now, Carson City does have a bit of a hangar shortage in one respect. If it's a moderately priced hangar, there's no space available. We just leased out our last space in our hangars yesterday. We have no space available, and that's generally the way it is. If we remove a tenant or a tenant leaves, we get a new one, lickety-split, and they're happy to be there. There's obviously opportunity for more hangar development. Question is, will the private sector step up due to the lease rates on the land? Carson City has a little bit of an oddball restriction due to the NRS as to what they can charge for lease rates for new development. And that is a mitigating factor towards any new development. As for development off the airfield but on airport property, I'm in favor of it if it increases the revenue stream. In particular, I've been a big advocate for many years of trying to get, and I know this may sound a little crazy and off the cuff, but trying to get a restaurant to locate there. There is not a restaurant in that quadrant of the city, really anywhere. There used to be that Chili's that was out there on College Parkway, and now there's a Chinese restaurant buried back there. But there's very little food service in that area and a big employment base right around the airport. So I would look at all of the above, to be candid with you. I wouldn't rule anything out.
Thank you. I would mention Sassafras is right there, though.
Okay, you've got to tell me where Sassafras is.
On Hot Springs.
That's why I haven't seen it, because I generally don't drive down Hot Springs. Okay.
Well, you've covered actually a lot of ground from what they've asked, so I'll try to go a slightly different direction. Can you tell me any rule, law, procedure that is currently dealing with the airport that you'd like to see amended, changed, added? Anything come to mind?
There's a few things. Interesting question, it may bore you. There is a few, and if I really put some mind thought into it, I could come up with quite a few. But there are some restrictions that need to be enforced. For example, again, just my opinion, we all have one, right? The airport has rules that prohibit what I would call mobile repair or unlicensed repair to occur on the airfield. And I happen to know of, unfortunately, a gentleman who drives around in his pickup truck on the airport, doesn't pay the airport any rent, any fees for being a business, isn't licensed, doesn't participate in any sort of insurance, and repairs aircraft against the rules and regulations of the airport. And that's something that I think should be enforced. There is a, and this has gotten better over time, there is a inordinate number of vehicular, vehicles that are going around the airport. And it would be great if we could restrict that. When we got the gate system in, that helped dramatically, because it restricted access. And I think a little more restricted access and perhaps some more regulatory enforcement by the airport would help make it a little safer place. Airplanes and vehicles don't exactly mix on taxiways. So that is a problem, and I've seen vehicles in non-movement areas all too often. I prefer not to see that. So those are a couple things right there. There's also the issue of collections when it comes to parking. The airport has often failed to adequately collect for overnight parking for patrons. And not only does it leave the airport out of the revenue stream, but what it does is it encourages a culture of people who are always trying to circumvent paying. And look, if you park your motorhome somewhere, you pitch a tent at a KOA, you've got to pay some money, and it's not a lot. Fees at the airport are not inordinate, in fact, they're quite affordable. But this practice of, I won't call it non-enforcement, but just look the other way, has created this culture of complicity out there. And you've got people who just want to, they want something for nothing. So there you go, there's three examples. Sure.
Sounds like non-enforcement to me, looking the other way. Let me ask you a couple of questions. First of all, just out of curiosity, where were you an executive with a larger company?
Have you ever heard of the Sharper Image?
Yes, I have.
Okay. I was, for many years, it's quite interesting, Steve Takeus and I are real good friends, and he knows this, I'm probably going to bore you, Steve. But long story short, I was director of real estate there and real estate counsel to the company, and I was very close with the ownership, which is how I ended up there. Any Sharper Image store that you went into, chances are, I negotiated that lease and I negotiated the contract for construction, and I made sure that store got open.
Thank you, that wasn't my official question, but I, but it leads into my question. Brad sort of took my development question, which I was going to pair with marketing. What would you advocate to market the airport better, to help it grow? And as a side issue, there seems to be, and if you're out there, you probably know this, a dichotomy regarding some of the people out there regarding whether it should be a full-time manager or a part-time manager, since the managership right now is open. I'd like to know how you feel about that. But the marketing question is my biggest curiosity.
Let's address the manager question first, if you wouldn't mind, John, and thanks for the questions. I've worked with a number of airports over the years, and I know there's this underwell, this underswell of, or undercurrent of people who believe we don't need a manager at the airport. I'm not big on government, I'm a, I hate to say it, less is better. We need an airport manager, and you need a full-time airport manager. And the FAA is going to tell you that if you want to continue your grant funding stream, you're going to need a full-time airport manager. You need an airport manager who's going to work with the Airport District Office and who's going to work with the FISDO and is going to maintain a level of safety, security, and compliance in accordance with federal aviation regulations and the Code of Federal Regulations that governs airports. If you don't have that, the airport's going to be in a world of hurt. I recognize some people feel that there's no need for an airport manager, and I can tell you firsthand from an experience I've had within the past year at another airport, where we own the FBO, which is actually only a drive from here, and the airport manager came in and fell into a mess that is beyond his belief. He was overwhelmed, and he has told me so, he had no idea just how bad it was. And you need a full-time airport manager, I can't impress that enough. So the marketing, that's a good one.
Kind of ties in with the manager.
It does, it does. We do a lot of marketing as a company. You could visit our website, you could look online, you can find a lot of things out about us. And if you didn't do any research, we actually operate the FBO at Lake Tahoe Airport, and we manage the entire ramp and the executive hangars. We own the executive hangars there, we manage the ramp. We do a lot of marketing there, and both of these airports are symbiotic to one another. One of the problems with these airports is, that particular matter, John, falls by the wayside. The airports should be marketing themselves, and they don't. They don't have an effective program to solicit new business into the airport, they don't have any outreach set up, they don't have any marketing funds. And there's a lot that can be done if you had someone there full-time as manager, that two do coexist, marketing and management, that can answer the phone, that can reach out to different businesses like Aero Medical that are looking to relocate maybe, maybe a company that has a corporate jet that is looking for a home in this area, because let's face it, we do have a lot of growth here in northern Nevada, and there's a lot of business and a lot of money moving into the area. Specifically, the airport has, unfortunately, like most airports, very little marketing. You know, what do we have? A website. Doesn't do a whole lot. Nobody's out there, you know, banging the brushes of the community at large, the pilot community, trying to solicit new business. And one of the things that does concern me, and I should really state this for all of you, we have an aging pilot population. I am not a spring chicken, and I am probably one of the youngest pilots at the airport. And this is going to be a problem if we don't start backfilling, because these hangars are going to start emptying out, because the pilots are timing out. They're getting to the point where they're not going to fly anymore due to age. So that particular matter of marketing needs to be addressed, and there's a number of different avenues that it can be. In particular, online advertising is very effective these days, but also being a member, having the airport be a member of NBAA, which is the National Business Aircraft Association, and getting the word out that the airport is here, this is the state capital, I mean, let's get real with one another here, right? You tell people Carson City is the state capital, and they say, "You're kidding." They have no idea, anyone from out of the area has. I bet you people in Vegas don't even realize that we're the state capital here.
Certainly act like it sometime.
Yeah, exactly. But the bottom line is, we need to do our own marketing campaign as an airport. I would hope that there would be funds available, and at a minimum, there would be human resources available to do just that. But that's, it's going to require human resources, and it's going to require some funding.
Very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate it. Do we want to vote on these positions separately, or do, I'll leave it up to the board? What do you want to do?
I'm okay with doing it at the end.
Okay, we'll do it at the end. Thank you, then. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Bradley, I'm going to have you come up next. I'll just have you state your name, the position you're applying for, and why you want to jump into the fray.
My name's Bradley Harris. I'm applying for a member position with the Authority as the at-large, and there's one, I believe, at-large, and would be replacing Morris White, who's served with dignity and done a really good job on the Authority. And really, the reason I want to jump in is just, I've watched over the last few months as some of the airport's business has been revealed to the community in terms of where it's going. And, you know, I think my interpretation, especially as I've started to get into the financials more and realize where, the airport has been able to maintain because of some extraordinary, an extraordinary situation right now, because they can sell rock. All right? You take that away, and it's not sustainable. It's just not. And I think that we have to work our way out of this. We need that airport. And we're also, I think, missing a great opportunity to, you know, to build the tax base. So I look at that, and I honestly don't know that much about airports. This is not my area of expertise. But I think what's been missing is professional management, and that is something I have a lot of experience in.
Thank you. And you've more or less answered it, but what's your vision for the airport in the next four years?
My vision for the airport in the next four years is, one, we get professional management, and that is including things like people not driving on the runway, all right? I mean, just some really simple stuff that isn't happening right now. And, you know, the previous discussion we just heard, I learned even more about those kinds of problems. So professional management, and then a sustainable business. And if we can be sustainable, I won't even say growing, but sustainable in four years, then I feel like we have done a heck of a job.
Thank you. All right, Brad? Or John? Shall I start with you?
Thank you. Looking at your background, I have one pre-seed question, as I did for the FBO candidate. But yours is different than his, and that is, are you a Hoosier, or did you just go to school there?
I am a proud Hoosier.
Thank you. I used to be stationed in Indiana, so that's why I ask. Your background's in human resources and coaching, et cetera, et cetera. How do you intend to bring that to your tenure on the Airport Authority, should you be chosen? And how would you do the marketing, the question I asked of your predecessor?
Well, first, I want to say, in terms of the human resources, there's quite a bit of overlap with Mr. Harvey's experience. So until such time that he were to age out of the position, that's some duplication. But from a coaching standpoint, that is helping people find good solutions to business problems, and that's not by suggesting them, it's getting their brains to work better. I would see a real opportunity to work with a bright, energetic manager that wants to take care of that facility, and being willing to help that person find some really creative solutions. That's where I see myself going in from a coaching standpoint. And then I guess the other thing I would say is that my background is human resources and coaching, but I've been in senior leadership positions for a long time, and I'm just as interested in the management of the financials and making sure that we don't go off the cliff in the next nine to 18 months as I am with, you know, finding creative solutions in the long term. So I've got a lot of experience in terms of working with the financials, just because of my executive background, and I would expect to be asking the right questions to make sure that we don't go off that cliff. And your other question was regarding marketing. Well, the first thing I want to say is, I think we've really got to define what we expect from NNDAs. They are supposed to be our economic development arm for this area, and what do they need from us to help market that? How can they integrate the airport better into their plans? And what is it that they're not willing to do so that we then have to pick it up from there? But I don't want to duplicate efforts. If they have the capacity and the interest in helping us market this airport, then we should be right on top of that and giving them whatever information they need and working closely with them. That needs to be our, absolutely our first step.
Okay. Good afternoon.
Hi, Lori.
Okay, so is there any rule, law, procedure, or process at the airport that you could see being enhanced, changed, amended? Anything come to mind?
The thing that struck me the most about the approach to managing the airport at this point is that there is so little trust of how the organization, how the airport is managed, that every little step that the Authority wants to take seems to be a three or four-meeting process. And so I think the number one thing is to get trusted management in place, and then, once that happens, to start looking at some things like, what is that person's purchasing authority? I mean, I give an example of what's gone on in the last couple of meetings that I've either attended or watched online, and there's questions about, how do we fix this fence? All right? Well, that fence is about access for the airport's customers, okay? And the idea that a, you know, that we can't trust an interim manager to just go out and get the fence fixed, and you need to talk about it not once, but twice? It just, and it's not a, I don't think it's a problem with the people on the Authority, I don't think it's a problem with the manager. I think it's where we are right now in terms of, you know, the turmoil and change and that sort of thing. But we've got to get to the place so that decisions can be made in a more trusting way so that, so that can be, things can be decided quicker. That's my number one observation. That's, that's my number one observation.
Hi, Bradley. My question for you is going to be to just kind of wrap up everything that you've said to answer the questions. Do you think that the airport should have a part-time or full-time manager? What do you see their responsibilities in totality being? And what do you see as the best avenues for development around the airport?
First of all, I think this is a full-time position. I think that we have to look at it from the standpoint that a, whoever takes over that slot has to grow the revenue enough that we can set aside this, the rock stuff that's been coming in and keep the, the financials, financials positive. And I don't think there's enough time in 20 or 25-hour week to get that done. So I think that it is a full-time job. Number two, it's, in terms of duties, we need, we kind of got to look at this three ways. I think there's, there's three big things this person has to do. One, this is a facilities management position. All right? And so that person has got to be the advocate for things like a terminal that's not falling apart. All right? You know, the state that that terminal was in when they finally, when we finally started putting some money back into it and fixing roof and that sort of thing, it was shameful. So that, that person's got to be an advocate for the quality of that facility and things like fences have got to be fixed. And that person has got to be willing to get on the phone, advocate for, for what has to happen, and get it through that authority the first time. Okay? So that's, that's number one, is that, you know, a real advocate for the quality of that facility. Number two is that person has got to be the number one liaison with the FAA. Because folks, that's where the money comes from, to do anything there. And you've got to listen to them, and if they say that, you know, we need an inventory of what's going on in these hangars, then you jump on that and you do it. If they say, "We don't like the quality of your lighting," then you go back to them and say, "Okay, pay for it and we'll change it." Whatever it may be, but there, but that's got to be a primary liaison. And then number three, and I, and I put this third, it's important, but it is definitely number three, and that is the marketing aspect. The bringing in more business. Now, we, and we have to stabilize. We've got to get our revenue up to a point that we can maintain that place. But number, I think number one has got to be the quality of that facility and the safety of that facility and, you know, doing things like keeping trucks off of the runway, et cetera. I mean, I've heard a lot of these kind of comments lately. So number one is the, the facility. Number two is the FAA relationship, because that's where the dough is. And number three is the marketing. So if I were going to write a job description today and it had three lines, those would be the three things I'd put on it. And the, you know, the last, the last point in terms of, you know, the, the whole marketing and where, where this is going and that sort of thing, you know, I think that the, we need to look at this, at this, this airport as something other than an albatross around our necks. And I think there is this feeling right now that, man, this is such a pain. And we got these problems and et cetera, et cetera. And we've got to start looking at it as much more of an, an opportunity to grow the tax base and to help with, to be a partner in economic development.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And I want to thank both of our quality candidates who applied today. Nick, there is no one else here?
No, ma'am.
Then I'm going to bring this back to the board. So, see what your pleasure is.
Okay. I move to appoint Michael Golden to the fixed base operator position, Larry Torres to the manufacturer position.
No, not Larry. No, Larry.
Larry withdrew.
Oh, he withdrew?
Larry withdrew. So you do have Michael, you have Michael for the FBO. You don't have a manufacturer, and you have one potential citizen at large.
All right. So I move to appoint Michael Golden to the fixed base operator position and Bradley Harris to the citizen at large position, each to fill term expiring October of 2021.
We'll take just a short break while the mayor returns to the dais.
We're going to bring the meeting of the board of supervisors back to order. We're now going to take up item number 21, 21 Alpha. This is colloquially referred to as the Lampa Development Agreement. Who do we have here to, Mr. Plummel, Mr. Lerner Hand? Who else?
Good afternoon. I'll, I'll give the introduction. Lee Plummel, Community Development Department. I'll give an overview of this. I have Dan Hughes from the District Attorney's Office, who's here to help with questions. You have on the requirements and legal pieces of the development agreement. So I'd just like to start with a brief overview of the project, where we've been, where it's going, and, and what the development agreement includes. So as you've started to introduce, this item is action to introduce an ordinance approving a development agreement between Carson City and the property owners that compose the Lampa Ranch specific plan area, which is up there on the screen. It's the Lampa Ranch property encompassing multiple properties, generally north Fifth Street on either side of the freeway. Just a little bit of history going back on the approvals that have already been made regarding this. In March of 2016, the Board of Supervisors approved the Lampa Ranch North specific plan area. That's the relatively big document that is referred to as the handbook in this development agreement. That establishes the policies for all development going forward on these property, on these Following that, at the following meeting, the zoning was approved for the development of this property. And then this year in March, in 2017, was the first tentative map was approved by the Board of Supervisors, which is, which was in the area generally towards the Solomon roadside, where, generally where it says project on that map. That was for 189 units. And that first approval, the first phase, was, was approved subject to the execution of a development agreement. So this development agreement's coming forward to meet that condition, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. Just to note, as of, even since this morning, we've now received an application for Phase Two of the development, which will be the remainder, kind of that area where it says site up there and down, and down to Fifth Street. So it's another 200-plus units. So the first two phases have now been submitted for, for single-family lots for close to 400 units. And so that, that application will tentatively, at this point, again, it's just submitted and pending everything being complete and okay with it, be likely December that that would come before the Board of Supervisors. So that slide was just the prior approvals. So this slide shows what, just highlights what the, the development agreement includes. But let me start by saying what this is not intended is to include, is every condition of approval or requirement that may have been already applied or will be in the future. So this isn't really to capture all the conditions of approval. There's actually really, and, and not all developments require development agreements. In fact, the ones we've had most recently are generally only to extend the, the time period of the approval. So that's been the most typical use of development agreements in, in recent years. There's two elements of this particular development, I think, that specifically warranted this coming forward with the development agreement, to memorialize an agreement between the city and the property owners. That's the fire protection mitigation fees that are in here, that are $1,000 per unit, and also the school mitigation fees that are also $1,000 per unit that are specified in here. So, and, and I think that's the primary purpose of this agreement and the need to have a development agreement. Again, not trying to capture all the conditions. The specific plan policies still apply. We're not specifically superseded by the development agreement. And other conditions of approval apply, and future conditions of approval based on each individual developments will still apply, subject to the development agreement. So we're also taking the opportunity to memorialize a couple of other things while, while we are doing the development agreement. The first being the incorporation by reference of the phasing plan that, that is a requirement of the overall development. So that, those documents, which again, a summary is attached to this, that's a relatively small document, but it's inches of pages of documents are the supporting materials that we're not intending, that are the technical studies that we're not intending to include and record with the development agreement, but they're a requirement that are, that are being incorporated by reference into this document. It's also related to parks construction, these, these other two parks and, and another one that's not up there is the Drainage Maintenance District. There's a couple of, of other agreements that will still be made, that still need to be made to be compliant with past conditions of approval. One of them being the park, agreement related to park construction, the timing of, well, the timing of improvements are established. I'll, I'll get to that later. But just in agreement, they still need to go to the Parks and Rec Commission on the details of those. But there's a three-acre site and 10-acre sites that are set aside per the Lampa Ranch specific plan area. But this talks about those, and I'll talk a little bit more about this and go in some detail. And I mentioned the maintenance agreement also that, that the Public Works is working on right now, because there are floodplain drainage facilities that are going to be dedicated to the city, and there's going to be an agreement and maintenance that needs to be worked out for that. And of course, the development agreement also includes other standard development agreement Going back, talk a little bit about the school fee and the, the verbiage in there related to the dedication of property. So this is, this is actually the map that is snapped out of the, the, the specific plan area document. The proposed school site that is being offered, should the, should the school district choose to, to take it, is highlighted there. It's in blue. It's, it's noted in the plan as a mixed-use commercial or, or a school site for dedication if they accept the dedication within the time period as specified in here. But that, that's the location of that. And I think with that, as I said at the start, there are some other approvals that are not necessarily specifically in here, but there are other triggers that are already in the development agreement of when certain things happen. I'll, I'll leave that up for reference right now, but there are things that need to be done before anything else happens, and there are things that have triggers going out into the future, including kind of the farthest down the road would be to go, that last one there would be a connection to East William Street, and it doesn't have to be Goldust West Way, but it, what it says is a connection to East William Street prior to the 811th residential unit being built on the west side of the freeway. And there's some other triggers for the parks and other facilities up there as well. So I want to note that you, you have a packet of late, of late material, and the late material is the agreement with, with a number of technical corrections in there. I do want to just go over a couple of things, just to point out of why some of the changes were made. I won't point out every technical correction, and I think when, when we have the approval in the end, I know that Dan would like to have some verbiage in there to allow us to make, you know, one last pass-through and just make sure there's the proper grammar and other technical corrections. But let me, and this will be the basis, we'd like this to be the basis. This has verbiage in there that the developer has proposed and we've accepted at, at the end. So this should be the version that we work from in any motion and making any changes from. I do just want to point out two or three items. If we can refer to page eight of 27 of the agreement, and this relates to the fire protection and mitigates, mitigation fee section 2.4, there is, this, again, this, I don't think that, we didn't feel that this was a substantive change, but under paragraph B, it talks about the fire department having the ability to condition projects to ensure adequate levels of service. And just to clarify that, is to comply with, is to add, apply with applicable sections of NRSCC and existing approvals. And really, we just thought a lot of that extra information was redundant to say, including but not limited to fire sprinklers. The fire department always has alternative means that they can use if they don't comply with the strict regulations in the code. So we've, we've accepted that change, the developers accepted that change. On the next page, on page nine and D, a question came up about alternatives to the fire fee and if, if it's said in there... and if, it said in there that alternative methods, if the fire department needs some things, or perhaps the developer could provide construction of facilities in lieu of paying the fee, and who would decide what that alternative method would be? We've added in there that that would be the Board of Supervisors. If there are alternative methods, it would come to the board. Otherwise, the fee would be collected. So it's the alternative to collecting the fee. And just a couple more quick ones. On page 11 of 27, it is under the school district verbiage. I didn't mention before, I'll mention it now, that this, the verbiage relating to the school site and the mitigation and the payment of fees and all that has been worked out between the, directly between the developer and the school district. This exact verbiage went to the school district on October 10th and was approved by the school board. So it is completely intact with that language, except for one little thing on page 11 of 27, where there was some discussion about the applicability in paragraph C there towards the bottom, and if applicable, the school district has requested that that verbiage, that if applicable, be removed. We don't see any problem with that, it doesn't affect it, but we will remove that back and put it back to the precise verbiage that was agreed to between the developer and the school district. And finally, I just wanted to point out, we had some questions about the so-called deed restriction notifying the property owners of the possibility of creating a park maintenance district in lieu of having the HOA, should the HOA fail. So on page 18 of 27, there's some modified verbiage. Again, I think we're all in agreement of what needs to happen. The developers expressed some concern about it being actually on the deed versus some other document that gets recorded on the property, but I think we all agree with the intent that we want a document recorded, whatever that may be, standalone document, recorded on the property to put future property owners on notice that we may implement a maintenance district for the property, should the HOA fail to maintain those properties. So that verbiage relates to that. And those are really the only corrections I wanted to point out specifically. There's some other technical ones in there, but I think at this point, I'd be happy to open it up to questions of staff before the developer gives their presentation.
Yeah, I think, just to start the ball here, we got an email last night from a member of the Parks and Rec Commission about the dog park. What's the status of that?
So, yeah, and there were some other questions about, we had some other questions about why isn't this or that in the agreement, and sometimes it's because it doesn't need to be, sometimes it's not appropriate there, and I think that, like the dog park or some of those types of details are not appropriate to lock in at this point, when the Parks and Rec Commission hasn't had a chance to weigh in on what those details will be. Per this document, they have to enter into an agreement. They already have to, they have to go to the Parks and Rec Commission, and they'll be able to use their master plan and to decide what, and work with the developer to decide what is specifically going to be built in these parks. So that level of detail, we believe, doesn't belong at this point in the development agreement.
Supervisor Barrett.
Thank you. First of all, just a philosophic question from my point of view. I think we inherited this $1,000 figure for both, well, certainly for the fire mitigation, from a previous fire chief who negotiated with the developer. And I was wondering, and that predated my tenure on the board, I was wondering why a small percentage, rather than an exact amount per unit, wasn't thought about, or maybe it was? Because $1,000 per unit, you know, that's $1,000 per apartment or $1,000 per large single-family dwelling, is it not? And just enlighten me to the thinking on that.
Sure. And representatives from fire here, as well as other departments, as various questions come up, but I think I can answer this one, because I think this come up before, but came up before. But the fire department's answer to that, if I recall, was that the call for service is about the same for a person living in a house as it is for a person living in one multifamily unit, roughly. So unlike water usage or other things where they may be different, the calls for service are roughly the same.
Okay, that's a good answer from the fire department's standpoint, but from the standpoint of the purchaser of a unit or renter in a unit, it doesn't make quite as much sense. But be that as it may, this is what's before us. Secondarily, I'd ask our council, in your opinion, and I've asked this question of you before on other issues, in other situations, are any of these changes, are all of these changes non-substantive, or are some of them substantive? From my view, a couple of them are substantive.
So I'm happy to answer that question as your deputy DA. The changes that Lee had already referenced in going through those line items, I would say that for the most part, they're non-substantive. Do some of them have perhaps a consequential effect? Yes, but for purposes of, you know, where we are today, after all the parties have agreed in good faith on these terms and conditions, yes, primarily those are just technical changes that are being made off of this last version.
Thank you. Again, the entire public, of course, doesn't know about these changes, so that's why I asked the question. Parties involved do, I agree with that.
Anybody else? Supervisor Barrett.
Should this go through? The first phase of the development is 181 homes? 189, excuse me. So with that being said, that all exits onto Solomon. How often will that traffic be monitored such that we know when a light needs to be put in at that location? I don't know if you can answer that? Hope needs to answer that.
We could have perhaps Lucia's here from, or Hope. So in the specific, yeah, I think I'm going, I think I probably am going to need help with this, but it's built into the traffic study, there are certain thresholds, so that as each phase comes in, that adds traffic to it, that traffic says is going to identify the point at which.
I read that, but, you know, in traffic studies and when they're done and so forth, that area can be very congested at specific times of the day now, so it is definitely a safety concern from my vantage point, so I would like to know the answer to that.
As part of the specific plan, we received a traffic impact analysis that considered build out of the entire 241, I want to say acres. With the first phase, we received a traffic report. They actually come in with the apartments, there's another traffic report, and I know one of the commissioners had a question. They said, "Well, if you have all these traffic reports coming in, and they're each specific to a phase, how do you capture that cumulative impact?" And that's the point of having a traffic report based on each phase, is to capture that cumulative impact, not just from the 241 acres, but from the background traffic that could be growing. So with every single phase, we're getting an updated traffic analysis that considers a cumulative impact of all entitled projects, as well as all background traffic, and the transportation department would identify which intersections mandated study.
Are there questions to the board at this time? Okay.
Mine's for the school district and the developer.
Let's hear from you. Come on.
Honorable Mayor, members of the board, Doug Flowers of Holland and Hart, on behalf of RD Lampa, one of the property owners that is subject to the proposed development agreement. I'm the one that wore a tie today, so they asked me to come and sit up at the table, but I'm happy to speak to any particular legal concerns relative to the document. If you have specific questions about items in the phasing plan or regarding the project's infrastructure, we also have some folks from the development team here who are probably a little bit better suited to answer that. Just real quick, I'll say that obviously we're supportive of your staff's recommendation to approve the development agreement as drafted with the late amendments that came in last night. We think your council and council for the district have both done a great job being responsive, working with us, raising good questions, helping us get to this final document, and we're excited to see it approved and keep moving forward. This is, as you've already heard from Lee, this is, in the world of development, I know you're all familiar with this, you start off, you know, at the 60,000-foot level, and you keep moving down closer and closer with entitlements as they come in. So this, this means we've now moved from 60,000 feet to maybe 20,000 feet. We're not quite at ground level yet, there will be other agreements that come forward regarding some of the infrastructure items. There will be final maps and ultimately building permits that you're asked to approve, so this is by no means the last opportunity you'll have to look at all these issues, but this document does represent something of a watershed, and that going forward from here, we now know that we have assurances from Carson City, that if we move forward with the development, as the city has approved, that we'll be able to complete it in the vision that we have in the specific plan. So, again, we're very supportive of this. Again, we thank your staff and you for your time today, and happy to answer any questions.
One question, just to... There are fees in this development agreement for both the school district and potentially for the fire? Are those fees, you agree to those fees?
Yes, we do agree to the fees, particularly in light of the last set of changes that came through, that clarify the entitlements and their permits, in accordance with NRS-278. So with those changes that were made, yes, absolutely, we're comfortable with those fees.
So you're entering into this, if this is approved, you're entering into this, those fees are voluntarily presented as part of this development agreement?
Yes, they are.
Okay. All right.
Can I dive in just?
Dive in on one.
So I just wanted to clarify that, too, that while I recognize it's voluntary, can you tell us why your clients are willing to pay in fees that aren't legally required? Is it because they recognize it's an impact to the community and it's a large development? But I'd just like them to tell me why they're participating.
They do. I mean, with any development of this size, you're going to create new impacts on the community, the need for new services, additional infrastructure, and it's only fair to ask for development to pay for that. With any large project, there's always, of course, also the opportunity that local government may ask you to cover existing deficiencies in their infrastructure. And so developers, in my experience, often enter into development agreements like this with fee structures set really for the certainty of knowing what they're getting into. We agree that we are causing impacts, we agree that it's perfectly fair and legal to ask us to mitigate those impacts and cover them for our project. And on the flip side, we also know that once the agreement's in place, some, not of course this board, but potentially some future unreasonable board might ask us to do something, and we would be able to say, "Well, we have this agreement in place." For the issues that are covered by this agreement, which certainly does not cover the waterfront, but for the items that are taken in there, fire, schools, we have that certainty, so...
Well, I'd just like to say thank you to the clients for recognizing the impact of your project and helping the community meet the needs. Thank you.
Question. Of course, Goldust Way is the last issue on this development agreement, and there's folks in the audience to speak to that. And my curiosity is, are there any alternatives that are being considered at this point in time?
I'll ask if maybe, Mike, if, yeah.
Apologies.
Good afternoon. For the record, Mike Raely with Rubicon Design Group, representing Blackstone Development Group. We are looking at alternatives. There's some engineering studies that are being done internally to see how the spine, what we were calling the north-south spine road, could be rerouted and come up to where we would actually need proper spacing and whatnot on William Street.
And prior to the, no more homes would be constructed till that's put in place, correct?
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions here? Okay. Tell Holland and Hart they sent a good man. I found you're, you know, crisp and to the point, it's good. Hopefully it'll stay that way the rest of the day.
Paid by the word, and my client was very clear, to use short, brief sentences.
We'll see where it goes. We'll see where it goes.
Certainly, though, you can afford a tie.
All right. Any other comments on this? Anybody want to weigh in? Mr. Bullware? Good afternoon. Go Cardinal.
Absolutely.
All right.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Board of Supervisors. My name's Jonathan Bullware, I'm the Vice President of Nevada Operations for Jacobs Entertainment, which is really a fancy way of saying that I'm in charge of all the Goldust West properties and the Sands Regency, and most of you know that I was the General Manager of the Goldust West in Carson City for the past eight years. So I know there's been some questions about Goldust West Way and access, and so our company has prepared a statement that I'm going to read about, so we can clear up what our company's position is. As many of you know, we have invested more than $40 million in the Goldust West Hotel and Casino through property and land acquisition and capital expenditures. We employ more than 200 people directly and many others indirectly through our business activities. While we generally, while we are generally supportive of the Lampa Ranch master plan, we need to take our own long-term development potential of the property into consideration. Goldust West Way is private property that has been maintained at our expense and that of the mall owner adjacent to us. We own about 80% of the road. Currently, it serves as a primary means of access to our property and the main artery for trash removal and food deliveries. It also serves our guests as a primary access point to our banquet facilities and another less public entrance to our casino. In the future, it may serve as developmental land to maximize the value of our property. Due to our current usage of the road, our concerns about pedestrian safety because of the significant increase in construction, residential, and school traffic caused by the Lampa Ranch project, and due to any future development plans we may pursue, we will not be granting any access to Goldust West Way in its current configuration. We feel the best way to accommodate the Lampa Ranch development is for Blackstone Development to purchase land to the west of Goldust West Way, which includes land that we own, in order to build a four-lane road. In our view, this four-lane road would be a much safer pedestrian and commuter option and be more appropriate for the traffic volume and needs of existing and future development at Goldust West and Lampa Ranch. This is the only plan that we will consider. We have communicated this position to Lampa Ranch developers, both verbally and writing, on multiple occasions, and yet to receive a positive response. We are excited about being in Carson City now and in the future. We're looking forward to continue with the opportunity to provide a great place to work for our employees, to service our local guests and out-of-town visitors, and to be very active partners, continue to be very active partners with our great community. Thank you.
Questions of Mr. Bullware? Go. John.
Thank you, Jonathan. Did I hear you say you're yet to hear a posit, did you have any response from the developers?
I believe the last response we had was back in May of, earlier this year, about, you know, couldn't come to an agreement, but we have communicated that position on multiple conversations.
Okay, so when you say it's not positive, that's your characterization of it, but they haven't, they haven't fallen in line with what you guys would like, or is that what you're telling us?
Yeah, I mean, I'll let them speak on their behalf, they'll put words in their mouth, but from our view, it's not something that, I mean, obviously they're not happy with it, but I think they would like just to take access to the road and tie right into the development, but there's a lot of things, as I mentioned, in our statement that we have to take into consideration to the impact.
Thank you.
To our business, so...
So Lee, can you tell me, you said this morning, how many units came in this morning for a request?
I believe it was 209. It brings the total of single-family residences up to almost 400 coming in for entitlement. And there's another 100-plus of multifamily on the corner. So basically, with what's, with what we've seen so far, including the multifamily, it would be billed out, oh, let me go back.
Would it, so it would be triggering the west-side 10-acre, would have to come to park and recreation?
So, yeah, yeah, so let me use this. This area here is 189 units. This is the one that's tentatively come in, that's another 209-plus. And I don't, I forget the number that's here, but that's 400. And so we're at something under 600 with everything south of Robinson Street on this side. I believe.
Jonathan, hang on a minute. I don't want to get, hang on, Jonathan, just one second. I'm not going to get in the midst of negotiations with folks here, but I'm curious, how would the stoplights work on William Street, under what you've suggested? I mean, how far, what's the distance between the one that goes in the Goldust Way now and where it would and where would the other one be? Or would there have to be a stoplight?
I haven't seen, are you talking about the proposal for?
Yeah, the one that you suggested, that they buy whatever they buy and then do a four-lane in there. What would be, how would the stoplights work?
That is a great question, but we have not been able to proceed to that point to do the research on that particular option.
Like I said, I'm reluctant, I'm not going to get in the middle of negotiating.
Great question.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Jonathan. All right. All right. All right. Any other public want to speak on this issue? Anybody? You sure?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Could we get a, you say you don't want to get in the middle of the negotiations, but this, I have curiosity as to what their current attitude is regarding what they, they've already said that they are looking at alternatives, but where are they in that process?
I'm not certain we're going to get them to go any further than where they've gone, but give it a shot if you think you can.
Once again, Mike Raely, there's, there's a kind of a number of alternatives to look at. I think Mayor, the Mayor pointed out a very valid concern is signal spacing and how that would work. And if you put in a new four-lane, could you have two signalized intersections that close to each other, those sorts of issues? We have not only civil engineers, can the design work, but traffic engineers looking at that as well. And it's too early in this, at this point to, to make a definitive answer on that.
I, I understand that. Is two lanes not a good option, or?
It, it could very well be, but that's some of the traffic engineers are going to have to look at.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody? We're going to shut it off here in a minute, so bring it back here. All right. Board, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion.
Motion's in order. We'll see where it goes.
Do you have a bill number?
127.
I move to introduce on first reading, Bill Number 127, an ordinance approving a development agreement between Carson City and the Myers Family Exempt Trust, the Ariz Family 1993 Trust 10-1893, Arti Lampa LLC and Nevada Limited Liability Company, Lampa Ranch East Hills LLC and Nevada Limited Liability Company, and Terrassus and Trip LLC, a Nevada Limited Liability Company regarding the development of a project known as the Lampa Ranch North Specific Plan Area Assessor's Parcel Numbers 010-041-16-38-52-70-71-75 and-76, as presented in the late material received prior to this agenda item with the changes that were read into the record today.
Check.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Discussion's in order. Supervisor Barrett.
Thank you. I'm a little bit hoisted on my own petard because of what I used to do for a living. This is the first reading, and my preference, because I'm pro-development generally speaking, and Lampa Ranch is already on the books and preceded me being on this board, would be to vote for this. But I can't read this late material without making my assertion, whether I'm right or not, I'm not an attorney, but my assertion is these are substantive changes. And consequently, I'm probably going to vote against this because as far as I'm concerned, the public hasn't had any opportunity to see these changes. And while most of them are technical, as our attorneys are, and probably in, in the eyes of the law, they may all be, I can read, and there are some substantive, substantive changes here. So I'm probably going to vote no because of that, and perhaps other reasons.
Okay.
I would like to amend my motion to the District, Deputy District Attorney asked or suggested that we add language to the motion to allow the DA's office to make any technical corrections necessary in the final draft, so I would add that to my motion.
Does the second agree with the amendment?
Yes.
Second agrees. All right. Further discussion?
Just, just on a discussion, because as the mayor indicated, I received quite a few discussions on the parks. So just so that people are aware, the Parks and Rec Commission will be seeing the plans. And yes, they're already on the record as saying they'll do a dog park in the three acre. So just to put that out there on the record so people recognize that that email's handled.
And I just want to go on the record to say I am concerned about the alternative access. You know I've talked to you about this. So I want to make sure that we have a safe alternative access and also that, that our traffic is monitored on Solomon. There's so many students out there on the road at certain times of the day, and that safety is critical. So, thank you.
Anybody else want to weigh in? I don't see any. Ready for a vote? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
Nay.
Okay. Motion passes 4011, nay. All right. Let's now take up 21 Bravo. This is potential qualifications for Planning Commissioner.
For the, for record, Lee Plumm, I'll give an overview of this. This is for possible action to approve duties and responsibilities description for the Planning Commission and also supplemental application questions for Planning Commissioner applications. This item is before you as a result of the, the goals and objectives that you gave to the, to the city manager for, for, as part of his annual review. So that was passed down to me to look into and as the staff to the, to the, to the Planning Commission. So I did some research of various communities, first around the state and then looking beyond that around the country. And I think kind of the direction was we need some legal qualifications for Planning Commissioners. So in looking at them, it's, it's actually very rare, and Napa Valley was the one place I could find that actually had a criteria, like, like with the historic, our Historic Resource Commission, you have somebody that has to be in the building trades, you have to have somebody in historic preservation, somebody in the district, and those very specific qualifications. We didn't, I can't find those generally. And Napa was the one I found which I, for, that required architecture and design, specific people on there. I presume that's because they have probably pretty high design guidelines, and Planning Commission gets involved in a lot of specific projects, looking at, looking at design. Our Planning Commission doesn't do that, doesn't look at that level. So my suggestion was, as we're bringing it forward, is to create, first, I've called it a job description, but maybe it's not a job description because that implies some compensation, but duties and responsibility, it's basically formatted like a city job description and describes some of the essential functions, qualifications, skills and abilities, desirable characteristics of a planning commission, as well as the makeup of, of a planning commissioner, as well as the makeup of the planning commission as a whole to provide guidance to the Board of Supervisors. So this, this is brought to you for discussion. You know, you're, you're welcome to use this as the base, make changes, provide other suggestions, but I think this is, this is the recommended direction for your, for your discussion and consideration and provide direction to, to staff if you would like any changes to it.
I've got a couple of lights on here. I'm sure we'll start down here. Karen, then Brad, and then where if we're going.
Lee, in any of the other jurisdictions that you looked at, did any of their commissioners or supervisors appoint people to be on the commission?
I didn't look into that. I didn't, I didn't notice that because I was looking specifically for qualifications. So I didn't delve into the manner of appointment. The question, I think that question came up, perhaps it was from you, so I looked into that a little bit, again, looking at NRS. And so NRS is unique to Carson City for the, because we're, because NRS talks about counties and cities, how they do it, since we're consolidated, there's actually a line in there specifically for Carson City that says the mayor appoints, appoints planning commissioners subject to the approval of the Board of Supervisors. So I kind, I would take that to mean that if the Board of Supervisors, if the mayor and Board of Supervisors created a different type of process to appoint them, then that would probably meet the legal test. The DA's office hasn't looked into this yet, but I didn't see any others that do that. I mean, there's certainly other types of boards that that's, that that's done on, but I don't know. I'd have to go back and look to see if any others do that with planning commissioners.
My one remaining concern, Lee, I think that you did some really good work on this. And although I would have liked to have seen these be requirements, the fact that their guidelines satisfies me, but I, I would like to add some language that makes it very clear that when we're interviewing applicants, if none of the applicants that are applying at that particular meeting meet our interpretation of the guidelines, that we have the ability to deny all the applicants and reopen the position.
So one of the thoughts that we might want to consider, and it's just, I'm just floating an idea out there, when I look at all of our other boards and commissions and the ones that are technical in nature, they do have fixed qualifications. But I thought about maybe having a hybrid approach and looking to say maybe each member of the Board of Supervisors nominates someone to the position, so that would be five of them. And then two of them would be what you call your citizen-at-large, because I still believe we need two, at least two people on the board that are just the general citizen that looks at a project from a broad perspective as, as a general resident or a neighbor or things like that. So I'm just throwing that out as another idea, that maybe we nominate each of us one person, and then the board would have to approve it for the law. And then we have two that we interview as citizens-at-large. Just throwing out another idea.
John.
So let me ask you a question, Laurie, along those lines here. Are you suggesting that there be qualifications, broad qualifications for those five, and then just citizen-at-large for the other two? But if you have, if you divide the qualifications up, suppose the mayor and Brad both want to name an architect, and suppose Karen and I want to both name a developer, you know, I'm making these stuff up, but you know, how would you sort that part of it out?
So be it. It'd still have to come back to the board for ratification of the nominations, because I think, like you said, the law requires it. But I, I think you trust us to potentially put on the subject matter experts, and yet we still leave two as just the general public. And we don't define for us whether it's one developer, two developers, one architect. I think you let that, let that go. But it seems to work well in, we've got the County Board of Equalization that we each take an appointment, your Charter Review Committee. So I tend to see those that are the technical ones, we kind of weigh in a little heavier than the broad ones, but I still feel strongly that we need two citizens-at-large, but that don't have to have any of these technical qualifications.
Yeah, I don't know that these are guidelines, you know, and I, frankly, I'm intrigued by your thought there. I'm not so certain that the guidelines didn't work anyway with the appointment, even if you do use five and two. I mean, because they're pretty, you know, they're, they're guidelines that I think everybody's got in the back of their mind anyway. I mean, even the applicants. I'm not so certain that that doesn't work, so I'm just kind of rummaging around about it.
Well, that's my same thought. Based on what Lee provided, I think it gives us a good framework. And if we did a mix of appointments versus interviewing for the position, I think it gives us a good cross-section, but it also gets you some good solid individuals in there that you know from the business community that are from those various areas of expertise that can make some really qualified decisions on that board. There's some tough decisions that they're faced with, and I just feel that we need to really get people on there that are qualified.
Well, the current planning commission has two planners and an architect and somebody from real estate, as I recall. So we've already kind of done that, is what you're saying, and I, I tend to agree with you. And, and I would like to continue that trend, but I agree with Laurie that one or two citizens who don't know anything give fresh, different eyes, so. But at any rate, and we just had this opportunity, of course, nobody applied, or not enough applied, to even fill the three slots on the airport authority. And some of them are, you know, got to have a fixed rate operator, got to have a manufacturer, blah, blah, blah. So, and yet we have, we have, I don't know that much about airports, but I'm on there as, as a board liaison or representative. And, and I think there's one at large, and that was Bradley took that spot today, and Laurie's had it before. So yeah, it's, it's a good amalgam. Any way we want to do it will work for me.
I would just ask the Deputy DA if we're, if we're okay.
We'd have to set a separate motion.
Yeah, yeah. Because it doesn't seem to be covered under today's.
Bruce, Bruce, come on.
No, that's correct.
I'm sorry to be the Bruce Kittis, Carson City resident.
You're not sorry to be Bruce, are you?
No, I'm sorry, sorry to be here. But I, when I, I look at the agendas and I watch the meetings at home, but this one I was intrigued as to why after a 150-year-old city and all these years, I mean, why, why now? And so that's what brought me here. Planning, my first job out of college was almost 60 years ago, when, when I went to work for the regional, LA Regional Planning Commission. And I appeared before many planning commissions and over the years as a developer. And so it's a subject close to my heart. That's what brought me to here. And particularly, it was these last three items under, what is it, Lee? Yeah, demonstrated knowledge of the municipal code, demonstrated understanding. We have a citizen legislature. We don't give them a test on NRS. Look at you. Did we ask you about what you knew about it? Save the mayor. But we didn't ask you what you knew about all the ordinances. This is, the commission is, is a citizen group. And, and I'll explain a few other things. We have a excellent paid, you have an excellent paid professional planning staff. You have a paid district attorney that keeps them straight on the legal matters. Not to mention the other departments. We have experience with the engineering, the fire, the sheriff. All of them give input on the applications. So I was trying to guess, what is it that bothers you? And I think one of it is, and I was going to say, the issues haven't changed over 60 years. I mean, I could have had the same, heard the same discussion 60 years ago about planning commissions. And what's my point? Just a minute. Oh. Because we're an old city, you're going to have more infill projects. Infill projects are more sensitive than Lampa Ranch. You don't have many citizens come, you know, talking about Lampa Ranch because it's out there by itself. If it's residential infill, it's going to be more sensitive. And the more neighbors that you have around that residential, the more sensitive it's going to be. When you add changing zone, changing general plan, variances, exceptions with that submission, I guarantee you, you're going to stack the, the room out here. And you've seen that, or others have seen that in Lakeview, when we, that project that wanted to put 90 production homes next to the customs homes and it was stuck in a bowl, or the 13 houses up on the side of the hill, under the boulders with 13% driveways. Yeah, those are the kind of projects that are going to get people out. If anything, you need to ask the developer how sensitive they are to an infill project. And if you think about it, I could have submitted a project on, at vintage, that complied with all of your regulations, and I agreed to all of the conditions of approval, and the planning commission couldn't have said anything. You'd have to approve it. And you wouldn't have had any neighbors out there because it was all on the books. But when you start making a whole bunch of changes, yeah, then that's a sensitive project. And adding this to your citizen commissioners, you've had wonderful commissioners. In fact, my favorite was, I think it was John Christensen, longtime chairman, wonderful planner. You've had wonderful planning commissioners up there, so I don't know why you need this. In reference to Supervisor Bagwell, if the mayor had been more successful on Home Rule, I knew that would get your attention, on Home Rule.
I'm listening.
When I read, when I read the NRS, I thought I better check. But actually, cities over 700,000 in Nevada, so I guess that's Las Vegas, actually, they have what I am used to. And that is, you have a council of five or supervisors of five. Each one recommends a planning commissioner. The planning commissioner, now, yeah, in fact, this is even true in Las Vegas, that the planning commissioner term is the same as the supervisor. You're re-elected, you can keep it, and what really happens is if you, each of you are responsible for your planning commissioner, and if you don't like what they're doing, you just ask them, "I sure like to have you resign." And, I mean, so, really, Las Vegas, in my opinion, has the correct situation. However, NRS requires that you have seven, which is really too many, and, but it is what it is. But again, without changing anything, just like Supervisor Bagwell said, if each of you recommended a candidate from your ward, I know that's a terrible thing to say, but if you each got one from your ward, and then you have two others at the mayor's disposal, you could implement that now without having to change anything.
Bruce, what about it on the documents in front of us? Where are you that has got you concerned?
Oh, it's under, it's on, it's under skills and abilities. I mean, how are you going to, a demonstrated knowledge of the, oh, I just thought of one other thing. I mean, look at this. You appointed a city manager, an excellent city manager, who had never been a city manager. I mean, it's a lot different in the military than having to put up with our citizens. And, I mean, I mean, what were, you didn't give him a test on all these things, but he's smart and he's a fast learner. And so, that's why I didn't like those three. I don't think you need it. You do need, when you ask for understanding, you missed, at least, have you read the master plan? At least that's in English and easy, easier to read than trying to figure out the ordinance, that most of the time on the ordinance, we have to look to Ms. Frelick to explain what it means. I mean, on ordinances, yeah. And finally, I'm about ready to close. Oh, yes, here, I have just a few more. We always hear, as a developer, by the way, I don't need, after the staff and all your departments have worked me over, I don't need to have another architect and engineer and person up there on the planning commission. I just want people that are general. And what are they really trying to decide? Well, it goes back to, we always hear, that group over there, not in my backyard. That's what we, that's been going on for 60 years, not in my backyard. And what does that really mean? It means, when it's in your backyard, then you'll be as serious as those people that say, "Not in my backyard." When your ox is gored, then you pay attention. It's a different story. So, what are we really asking these planning commissioners to do? Most of the time on the difficult issues is, is it compatible? And you don't need all of this stuff to be able to decide whether it's compatible, and generally, that is subjective. I'm almost finished, but to go with your Da Vinci statue today, I was looking up Da Vinci, and one of his quotes is, "Simplicity is the ultimate sophistication." Please keep this simple. Thank you.
Well, that's a good closing argument, man. I have to, I'll have to remember that one. Too bad I'm not in the argument business anymore, but that's a great close. All right. All right. So, what's the board want to do? I mean, I, you know, I kind of have, I kind of have mixed emotions. And the one issue that caught my attention when Mr. Kittis was talking was, you know, demonstrated knowledge of, I think, you just have knowledge of the Carson City Municipal Code, it's fine with me. I mean, but I think that somebody, before they come and talk to us about being on a commission, they ought to take a close look or a look at, you know, what is it they're getting themselves into? I mean, just have some idea. And, because I think, you know, a lot of people just want to serve, and that's great. That's great. And there's nothing wrong with that, and, you know, one of the things that, you know, causes me to think about the other side of things rather than a nomination process is that I think it's good to have people come and present different ideas and, you know, talk about it in the open, like we do right now. So, I think there's a, there's a amount of merit in that, and we are a citizen group. There's no doubt about that as well. But I, but I think that we're at the point, and Bruce raised a good point, you know, why haven't we done this before? Well, we've, as we move on through the life, you know, we do with the Historic Resources Commission, and I think there are a couple others where we have specific criteria to fill. I got, I got that. I think that, you know, we're, we may be just at a point where, you know, we want a degree of, of understanding of what's involved in being a planning commissioner. And I think that's all that's going on here. Whether this gets passed or not, I think that's kind of what, at least what I'm trying to get at.
Well, and Bruce makes a good point, which is why I asked if other jurisdictions appointed folks, because I think appointing one from each ward gives good representation. I actually think that's a good idea. And with regards to having read the master plan, Brad always asks that question every time, and it's amazing how many applicants haven't even looked at it. So, I think that needs to be a requirement.
May I?
John.
Well, you want to jump in there?
I also, while I'm talking about Mr. Kittis's comments, I certainly agree that it should be a citizen, a citizens committee and not a bunch of planners. And even the planners we have on there, I think they would also agree that it should not be a planning commission full of planners and any other specific targeted. It is a citizens committee. And I think the intent of these, I did these three bullets that have some demonstrated knowledge of the codes and processes. I think that's up to you to determine what level. That wasn't intended to be a high level of knowledge and know everything in the code, but I think it was to have looked at the master plan, be familiar with where development in the city is, has occurred and is going to occur. I think it, it ties into questions you have actually asked planning commissioners over the interview periods that I've, that I've seen over the years. So, I think it's up to you to interpret that, decide if you want it in there as well. But, but it wasn't intended to be a high-level test of the knowledge of those, and I agree in the citizens committee concept.
John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bruce, you're always entertaining. Thanks for coming down and making our day close to the end a little, a little better. Your points are well-taken, but after 60 years, we should review anything, and I don't think we've had this for 60, this current way for 60 years, which is one of the reasons I want to thank Laurie for suggesting that we look at the Airport Authority too. I think we should look at all these committees every decade or so and say, are we, you know, do we want to make any changes? I mean, the board should. But thanks for your suggestion. I would add that I, I really like the, have you read the master plan idea? That should be more of a, you know, let's, let's get real here. I've been the master plan advocate since I came on here, not that anybody else hasn't been. I've just been vocal about it because I'm new. But a master plan is a real, a real small hurdle to say, do you know at least what's in it? And so, but the idea of the one for each of us, and, and of course, the mayor couldn't choose anybody in the city, so we'd have four from wards and one, one from the mayor who, you know, he couldn't bring them in from outside, but otherwise, you know, knowing our current mayor, he might find a ringer. But at any rate, and then you still have your two citizens, and one board member might say, "I want a third citizen." I don't, I don't care if they have planning, et cetera. But that should be the first thing that you ask somebody. Would you serve on the planning commission? And oh, by the way, would you bone up before you come before us? Because the other four want to know that you read the master plan or at least know what's in it.
Brad.
Well, I haven't said anything yet. So, I think the appointment process could work well, but I don't know that I agree that we need to appoint somebody from our ward. There's little, if anything, that I can think of that we do that is specified by ward, and we actually want to be able to look at the best applicants and not necessarily be restricted just to our specific ward. So, would that change? This, this is something that I think could work well, but, you know, to, to answer your question, Bruce, the, I've been to enough planning commission meetings and watched the proceedings stumble along, and people looking at each other and not really knowing how to make, make the next step. And so, the thought process behind this, for me at least, was if we can create some guidelines so that we know we have at least a baseline of knowledge for people that are going on the planning commission, then maybe we can create a more efficient and professional planning commission to help us with the long-term planning of the city. So, I think that was actually the genesis of this, which I think is a good idea. If we go to the appointment process, I don't, I don't think I have a problem with that as long as we have the ability to appoint who we think is the best person.
I'd agree to that, too. I'd like, I'd like to find somebody in the ward first, but, yeah.
Try that first.
But, yeah, because it's a small city, so you might have to go somewhere else.
Yes, my next question would be implementation. How would you, how would we get there? How would, how would we go about this?
So, we were just, the DA and I were just talking about this. I, I think it'd be good for us to get a little bit of guidance from the board, if, assuming that's the direction you're going to go here. There'd be a couple of different ways you could do it. Obviously, you could grandfather all the existing commissioners, and as they termed out, we would tie a commission member, or at least five of them, to one of the board members. The planning commission serves at your pleasure. You could, you could start all over again. One of the things I did hear that may be appealing to you is the planning commissioner is tied to your own election. So, I mean, we'd have to think about how we would phase, you know, how, how we'd phase that in. We obviously have an election coming up in 2018. Do you start then? I mean, most of the people, with the exception of, I think, one, are all in their first term currently. So, you've got a little bit of time for most of them. Lee?
I was going to, the counter to that for consideration before we develop it is, do you want a brand-new Board of Supervisor appointing a planning commissioner, or do you want the planning, or do you want the board member to serve a little bit and figure out what's going on before selecting a planning commissioner? I don't have a suggestion one way or another, but that's just the type of consideration you need to think of when you're tying it to the specific.
Well, I would comment to that. I mean, you're a new supervisor, and you've got to pick somebody to the Board of Equalization.
And Charter Review.
And Charter Review. And, I mean, you're in touch with the community, you know who functions out there well and in their various realms as a, you know, in whatever capacity, so I think it's okay for a new supervisor to be able to do that.
I agree, yeah. And I would suggest that we, however you phase it in, that you still, this will save us some time up here, we'd have five that would suggest, and unless the board went against that suggestion as a nomination, then, then you wouldn't have to have five interviewed, you, you don't have to bring them in and interview them, and just interview the other two, the citizens-at-large. And so, we'd cut down the number we interviewed.
Right. Do we want to start? We could decide whether it's something we do this coming January, when we do all our other appointments, and it's co-terminus with your term, so some of us would be appointing one-year people, and some of us, you know, we could start this January or the following January.
Well, I think you have to take into consideration the fact that, as he said, they're all in their first term.
Doesn't matter.
Well, you're going to get rid of them?
You can select any of them that currently serve as your nominee.
Well, you can, but if you don't want to, then you're booting one off for another. If he's in midterm, I don't know, that works real well.
And I just want to point out to the NRS, it talks about the, the mayor appointing and the, basically the ratification by the Board of Supervisors, so we have to work within that language.
So, we would nominate, and the mayor could approve, and then we'd go, yeah.
Okay, well, I don't want to run too far afoul of the meeting law here on this. But, but let me ask the board, you know, it seems like what we're talking about here today is not really inconsistent with what we might do. I think you guys probably have an idea, put some thought into the nomination process, go down, you know, give some thought. We'll think about that at the same time. But I was wondering if, you know, to move the duties and responsibilities along, I was, and it's just a wordsmithing deal, rather than say, "Skills and abilities," put suggested skills and abilities. And that way, it doesn't seem like it's so mandatory, it's, you've got to be able to read a blueprint. I'm not certain I can read blueprints.
See how well you read it.
Yeah.
Within that context, how do you feel about the master plan part?
I like the master plan part. I didn't see that in that skills.
No, I didn't either.
I think, I think.
So, to the third to the last bullet under skills and abilities, I would add, demonstrated knowledge Carson City Master Plan, Title 18 and Development Standards.
Of course, it's different from reading the thing, but that's okay. You probably, yeah, you can, you can get that demonstrated ability by at least familiarizing yourself, or you don't mind having to read word for word.
You could take the word demonstrated out. It's just an, you've read it.
I guess, you know, if we're going to wordsmith a little bit, I, I'm concerned about the word, demonstrated knowledge of the, I don't know how you demonstrate that knowledge. I think you need to, you know, just the knowledge of it is fine. I mean, whether or not you have to go down and say, you know, "I did this, and therefore I know what is going on." It wouldn't hurt me to say, you know, put in a requirement in that bullet point to say, you know, including, "Read the master plan." But I think I would take a, the word demonstrated out of there.
Something like a general knowledge?
Yeah, and the same with the second to the last bullet point, it says a demonstrated understanding. I'd take demonstrated out of that as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just noticed. Then I would add, under the ability to read drawings, blueprints, and other architectural plans, I'd put in their general ability rather than ability. That's my two cents. I don't know, and I think, you know, we could do, if we're bored once, I think we could, I mean, because I think the rest, this goes pretty well, and we can always put some thought into the other thing. Bruce, I was going to ask you, when you were in the development world, did you appear before both types of planning commissions between, you know, done the way we've done it in the past here or by nomination? Did you see any difference in how those worked or functioned? Get what I'm saying?
Repeat the question.
Well, in other words, here, you know, we have, we have applicants who come and interview, and then we pick, as opposed to nominating one from a ward or whatever. And my question to you is if you had any experience as to whether or not, dealing with both, both types of boards, as to whether one was good?
Okay, now, now for the rest of the.
Okay, now for the rest of the story. So for 20 years, I was in Pittsburgh, California. I did seven projects there and they had five on the council, five on the planning commissioner. Each council person had an appointment on the planning commission. So first of all, it made it a lot easier. If I talked to the council person, I knew that the message would get through to the planning commissioner that this was a good developer. And these were all, that's a 150-year-old city and all the projects were infill and I had a lot of Sicilians were neighbors. And one project, I had a lot of Black Americans that were all neighbors and we had to get along with them. But one way you get things done is you agree with the staff report. As a developer, if you go into and say, I don't agree with the staff report, you're in trouble. So that's why when I talk about experienced developers and inexperienced developers, I don't know if that helps you, but it does, it does help if each of you, and I think the NRS in Las Vegas, they call it as referrals. So if you have, if Brad has a problem with Supervisor Barrett's planning commissioner, you know right who to go to. You don't have to talk to the planning commissioner, just go talk to Barrett. But it's a good system and.
We aren't speaking. He and I aren't.
Yeah, no, but it does.
That's helpful. Thank you. I mean, that's helpful.
Very.
That's helpful. All right.
And then I just had another thought. You had some proposed supplementary questions. And so number two on that, you had, why would you like to serve on the planning commission? And so I kind of just looked at that, went back to the original application and I just want to, just a general comment. I think our application itself should be amended to ask that on every board because it doesn't exist. It's like, why don't we ask all of them? Doesn't matter the board. But anyway, I think question two should be just integrated into the actual application that we have for all boards and commissions.
Okay. Yes, sir. Come on, Bruce.
Yeah, probably a good idea if they know how to read. So read the staff report and the supporting documents and the emails from the folks and then it's.
Get us in trouble there.
Yeah. It's, on the qualifications, it's a good idea that they know how to read and that they can, that they will read the staff report and the documents and the emails. And then another qualification is, it's a good idea on applicable submissions to go visit the site by yourself and look at it so that you get a sense of what is compatible. And then the last one that I like, I can't remember which, maybe you wanted, maybe the mayor said it. I look out there in the audience and how many are in opposition and then multiply by 10.
Well, I think, one, I don't know if you're being facetious not on reading, and I think that, you know, when you go too far down that road, I'm not certain we should do that. The other thing with staff reports, let me just say, you know, it's one thing for the developer to have, work with the staff, but when you're a homeowner and you come in and you disagree with the staff report, you ought to have the ability to express that. And I think that, you know, if you put in here that, you know, you'll read the staff report, that's an indication that the staff has done, you know, that that's where we're going to go in this. And while that may be a practicality for this person, I don't believe that's where we should go because I don't think that we up here, we take staff reports and understand them and appreciate that the diligence has gone into them, but that doesn't say that just because the staff said it, that's the Bible. And I also would caution, you know, sometimes when you see groups of people in a room, I mean, I've always been taught that, you know, decisions, public decisions as we make shouldn't be affected by the number of people on one side or the other. I mean, and I think there's case law that says if you rest your decision on, you know, the numbers on one side or the other, you've probably made an error. I mean, a legal error rather than resting on what the code really tells you to make your decision on. So that's my, just my two cents, but.
That's worth more than two cents.
I agree with that, but I think visiting the site that's under question is always an important thing that should be included. It makes a big difference just to have, you know, a visual feel of what's going on.
Okay, what's the board want to do? You want to have them massage this a little bit and then bring it back to us or you want to make a motion today?
They have to bring it back, right? They have enough direction.
Bring it back.
Yeah, do massage it like that and then let us think about the issue of actually.
I would prefer we just direct staff to bring that back to us.
Yeah.
We can do that.
Are you approving the language? Because we kind of wordsmithed it.
Well, I think what you're saying is, I think we'd like to see, we'd like to see, well, we'd like to see the language brought back that we just discussed on the record here. And then the question to the board is, do you want to ask them at the same time when they bring it back, to bring back a thought about?
Implementation.
Implementation of nomination.
A proposal, an executable plan with a couple of options for you to implement a referral or a nomination, whatever we're going to call it.
And Mayor, you don't need to vote for that. You can do it as mayor, just refer it back to staff with the instructions.
I just did it. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
You know what? That's why I love the Marines, man. I love the Marines. I shouldn't, I wouldn't say it in public, but I'll tell you a story about Nick one day. I mean, one day I asked him something and he asked me, he says, is this something you'd like to see done? And I'd never heard a city manager ask that before. And I said, well, I guess it is. And an hour later, it was done. I mean, I can't believe it. Anyway, hats off to the Marines. Okay. All right, we'll let this go. We've got enough direction on that. We'll now take up item 21, Charlie. Lee, you want to get appointed?
Sure, I volunteer. So this is, this is action to authorize the mayor to sign a letter on behalf of the board of supervisors recommending the reappointment of me to the State Land Use Planning Advisory Council for a three-year term from January 18 through December 2020. I provided in the packet to you a little bit of information about the background of SLUPAC as they're known and what they do. If you have, I'd be happy to answer questions. I mean, as you see, there's representatives from the, from each county in the state.
We'll take a motion to appoint you for a three-year term.
I'll do it.
Motion's in order.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign a letter on behalf of the board of supervisors recommending the reappointment of Community Development Director Lee Plimmell to the State Land Use Planning Advisory Council, known as SLUPAC, for a three-year term from January 2018 through December 2020.
There's a motion, the second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposing, nay. Carried. All right. Thank you, Lee, for taking on the duty again. All right, let's take up the last item that we have before concluding public comment. Sue Meriwether, you like to come up and testify so much, I can see that you're just jumping up to the table.
She's like, I'm exhausted.
Save the last for best.
Yeah. Best for last, yep.
And you brought help, too. Look at that.
I did.
Oh, my goodness.
Reinforcements.
All right. Tell us why this is the right thing to do. I think we all kind of understand the process.
We've been through it.
We've been through it. So tell us how you're going to finance it.
We have.
And why it's the best product and let's, we'll go for there. We've already heard a little bit about it. We know what your opinion is.
Sue Meriwether for the record, Aubrey Roulette, my chief deputy for elections. And we have Dan Clark from ESNS, Election Systems and.
Software.
Software. Drop link. Here in case you have any questions for the vendor.
And he is, in what capacity is he here again, please?
Regional sales manager.
Okay, all right. Very good. All right.
So we are here today to approve the contract for the use of the voting system with ESNS. As you saw in the staff report, we had, the total cost for the voting system is $454,975.97. That cost includes the first year of the maintenance licensing and all the good stuff that comes along with it. That's usually costs $25,057.50. That cost is normally paid for by the state. It was in the past paid for by the state. They were budgeted, this last legislature, a certain amount of money to help cover the cost of that maintenance and licensing. So at this point, we're not sure how much they're going to cover in that cost for, after January 1st, 2019. And that's when our next annual cost will come into place. What we'll, what we believe is going to happen is the funds will have to apply for a grant, just like we did for the money that came from the legislature to the Secretary of State to help and hopefully pay for the whole annual cost for that. And so let me go and kind of briefly go, give you a breakdown of where the funds are coming from for the purchase of the voting equipment. We were really pleased, this last legislature, to work closely with the Secretary of State and this legislature in several counties to get $8 million funded to purchase the voting equipment. That covers about half of the cost of the voting equipment. Of course, Clark County got a majority of the money, but we felt very happy that we were able to get any funding at all. We also applied last year for capital improvement program and ended up with $165,553 to go towards. That leaves, oh, and the grant money that we're applying for, for the state, they awarded us $231,388. That leaves us with a balance of $58,034.97. ESNS has agreed to, instead of trying to come up with that money for this fiscal year, give us at no charge, no interest, give us until July 1st to pay for, or to pay them that $58,034. So we thought, you know, I, it's a lot of money, but we all recognize that we do need to get the voting equipment and I think, you know, I think this is, I think we're very fortunate that we were able to get the money that we did for it.
And this can be in place, this can be in place before the 2018 election?
Correct. Right.
ESNS agree with that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So we, and Aubrey has put a little PowerPoint presentation together to show the difference in the type of voting equipment and explain a little bit about the difference between the current system that we're using, that the whole state, we're replacing with Dominion Voting System and moving into a ballot marking device, which is similar in a way, but different. The way that, or let me back up here a little bit. The reasons that I, we looked at both voting systems, we felt that this ballot marking, ESNS's ballot marking device was a simpler process for our voters. It was easier for our election workers. We no longer had to have the votes on each individual voting machine, so we were able to cut back on the amount of voting machines that we needed to purchase. We don't, we no longer have to worry about changing the paper. I don't know if you've ever seen us, but we were constantly changing the paper on the printers, especially towards, on election night, towards the end of the night. You know, my, my workers were, you know, we were, the polls were packed and here, you know, all the machines were going down because the printer paper was running out. So that, it all goes away. And the simplicity of this, I think, is just going to be, and I've talked to so many different people, I've, we've talked to different jurisdictions around the country. It's a very popular, ESNS is a very big company that supports voting. We have it for our voter registration. That's, our electronic poll books are with ESNS and now our voting equipment hopefully will be with ESNS with your approval. The thing that we really, that I think really drew us is that when the voter is issued, the process of going in and getting your ballot is checking in with the workers will be the same. The only difference is, is the worker will now have a little printer and it will print on a ballot your ballot type instead of the voter card. So if you're in precinct 101, it will print on your ballot 101 and then you go to the machine just like, but it's a ballot marking device. So it's like the punch cards, but electronic. And it will mark who you voted for and you could, on the screen, all the equipment is all handicap accessible and it prints out who you voted for after you review it on the screen and then you take that ballot and you drop it into a ballot box in which all of you know.
With your, with your.
With your votes on it.
With your votes on it.
Right, right. No more, it's, it's not, your vote is not on that individual machine. It's now on this ballot. So then we take the ballot and we drop it into a ballot box. And I think I'm stepping into her PowerPoint presentation, so I'll let her talk about that. But I think, you know.
Let me ask, I mean, I know Brad's got a question or two. I'm assuming you don't pick up, I'm assuming you let the person who voted put it in the ballot box.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, rather than have another hand on it.
And as you know, we have election workers.
Yeah, I got you, I got you.
You know, they're, they're there. We're going to have election workers at the ballot boxes, you know. That was a big concern of the other counties. They said, oh, my voters are going to walk out the ballots. Well, when we talk to these other jurisdictions, it's not a problem. It's, as long as you have the staffing to oversee and the voter understands that's their ballot, you know, they have to understand that and, yeah, and we.
The way you queue the lines.
Correct, correct. And, you know, and I know there was some concerns because Carson City is going with a different vendor than the other counties. Voting machines in the county, they do not affect other counties. It's an individual purchase, whereas if they were going to do anything statewide, they should do the voter registration system statewide. But voting is held within each individual jurisdiction and it's up to us to tally and tabulate those votes. And we, we give that, you certify it, you canvas it, and that information is given to the Secretary of State. Nobody can hack into the systems and that was another concern. All of the voting equipment, all of the tabulating hardware, software, computers that we use is all standalone. It's not connected in any way unless somebody could suck votes out of electricity. No one could take the votes off of that voting equipment and it's all supported by the vendor. All of the.
What happens if there's a contest, a ballot contest?
Can you count the ballots?
We could review the, recount.
Are the ballots actually marked or are they electronically marked?
They are both. So I was just about to, I was just.
We'll see. I'll wait for Aubrey's discussion.
Yeah.
Brad, I'm sorry.
I don't even know if she goes over this, but.
Brad has a question. He's been waiting for a while.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to add one more thing is the process of pre-LAT and post-LAT and audit will not change. We will always have an election board come in, test all the ballots, the machine, the equipment before the election, after the election, and then we do an audit. We're going to do a manual audit of the ballots so that they actually look, see who they voted, run them through the machine and make sure that that machine is counting those ballots. So, you know, that whole process won't change, so.
I have some questions for you, if you want to come up to the table. And most of these questions are answered in your Exhibit A, Hardware Maintenance and Software License, but I just want to get this information on the record. So first, Carson City will own the voting machines, but they will license the software, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Software dates are included?
Software dates.
Software updates are included?
Correct. That's the software, the firmware license fee and the software license fee cover that. So we come out with it almost on a yearly basis and then those are covered underneath that. So we'll come in, upgrade it. underneath that. So we'll come in, upgrade everything for free.
Troubleshooting of the machines is included or not included, or included to a certain extent, and then we pay extra for extra visits? And is it onsite or over the phone?
So, two-part question. For the, the support, we always have a help desk, phone support that is available seven days a week, Monday through Friday, 7:00 to 7:00 a.m. across, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. across the country for hardware and software calls to answer questions for customers, and then on phone support over the weekends. And then we also, for the maintenance of the actual equipment, will come in every two years. They're on the silver plan for Carson City, so we come in every two years, which means we come in every even year before the big elections to make sure that we touch the equipment from top to bottom, make sure everything's functioning correctly onsite.
And do you have a, a discount or trade-in program if 10 years from now, when we need to replace these machines, we pick you as the subsequent vendor again?
Yes, we will work with you. We, we had a trade-in discount that we allowed for the previous system that was not ours, and that would not benefit us in any way. But yes, we do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Aubrey, do we steal all your thunder, or are you ready to go?
You're welcome to steal my thunder.
All right. All right. Tell us, get in the weeds. Let's see what we're doing.
This is a very brief overview of what the new system will be. The difference, the difference between the machines is, as Sue indicated, we are purchasing a ballot marking device. It's not going to retain the votes on the actual voting machines. It is going to electronically mark the paper ballot. They will then place that paper ballot in the ballot box, which is the trash can looking, for lack of a better word, the black box on the, on the screen. So that is kind of a picture of what the actual ballot marking device will look like, what the paper ballot will look like, and what the ballot, the ballot scanner box will look like.
Let me jump in there real quick, Aubrey, because I describe this on a, on a daily basis. So the, the difference with the system that you guys are using now, you vote on the touchscreen, and then it's stored electronically on the machine, and then it's also printed out on the little receipt on the right-hand side. Voter walks away with nothing. This system, you'll take, in the middle there, you'll have a blank express vote ballot, is what we call it, activation card slash ballot. The voter will walk up, put it in the machine, use the touchscreen like they're used to, and then when they're ready, they'll hit print card. It'll print off, it's a thermal ballot with a thermal printer, so it'll print off the markings with how that person voted. So instead of, they get all the functionality of the touchscreen, but then they physically get a ballot to hold in their hand again, which is what we heard from people across the country, is they love voting on a touchscreen, but they want that ballot in their hand. So instead of just walking away with nothing, they get a ballot, and then they put it into the ballot counter on the right, which is the trash can looking machine.
We do need a better name for that. So this screen just goes into what the differences are. Again, the major difference with the DRE system that's currently used, where they retain the voter's votes on the machine, versus the ballot marking device that we would like to purchase, where the votes are not retained on the machine. The paper ballot is the actual backup audit trail for the BMD device, versus the printer rolls that are on the current DRE machines. Those rolls of paper that accumulate on those printers are what is actually the backup audit.
And, and let me jump in. That was one of the, the problems that a few of the counties had with the current voting equipment, is the cartridges stopped reading. The ballots were on the, the equipment, but they couldn't get it to read in their tabulating software. So they had to use those paper rolls and manually put in the votes into their tabulating system, which I find is a nightmare. And with this system, we not only are reading the ballots in the trash can, that's where, you know, we pull the cartridge out and we read those ballots, but we can, if that fails for some reason, which it won't, we can always take those ballots and read it in the ballot counting machine that we have in the office, or on another ballot box manually by putting them in.
You know what else I thought was great about this one? When the person goes and puts their ballot in the receptacle to count it, it tells them if it's a good ballot. So you also don't, won't have an undercount or a problem to go, "Whoops, three ballots were bad ballots." So the person could know to go back to the front of the line, destroy that ballot, and get another ballot. So if it got marked, if it got torn, if it, all those things, because a couple of us were, you know, taking the pen and writing all over them. So anyway, it's a good system that the person's going to feel comfortable that their vote is being recorded.
So where are the hanging chads?
This next screen...
I need those.
She's like, moving on.
This next screen is the actual, it's the DS 200 ballot scanner. It's the receptacle that the paper ballot will be placed into for the, once the voter has cast their ballot. The results cartridge from this ballot scanner is what will be taken back to the central counting location for tabulating and reporting, as well as the actual ballots from this receptacle. Anything else you want to add to that, Sue?
And how many of those receptacles will we have? Do you have to have two, one for...
We're purchasing five total.
Five? Wow.
We have, we will have them at the exits of the polling locations, so at the community center, as well as at the courthouse for early voting on election day. This is our high-speed scanner. It's the DS 450. This is for absentee ballots, as well as if we need to do a recount on the paper ballots that go into that DS 200. This one is a monster. It's, it's awesome. It can read amazingly quick. It outstacks the ballots so that you're able, if there are overvotes, undervote situations, it will outstack the ballots so that you can then rerun them through. It's, it's an excellent resource for protecting the voter intent. You can take a second look at the ballot without having to dig through entire stacks to see what was going on.
So we'll primarily, primarily use this for our absentee counting. We'll probably, I'm not sure how it's going to work exactly, but for, if we need to run any reports, like to do our audit, we may, this, this is probably where we'll run a stack of ballots. We haven't determined, I'm working with the Secretary of State on regs, to determine how many ballots we're going to test and run them through, and then it will give another report under a, you know, not under the official mode, but under like the post-lat mode. But this is where we would run any ballots like that through.
And that is voting made simple. That's really, truly the whole process. It, it takes a lot of the component-heavy equipment that we have used in the past and streamlines it to a much more efficient, less component-heavy, but yet still voting machine-specific proprietary equipment that we feel our, our voters will really enjoy using.
A follow-up to Brad's question. You probably can't answer for what would happen 10 years from now, but he asked if there would have been, if there would have been a discount, and you said, "Yes, we even gave a, a trade-in discount for machines we don't, weren't ours." Would the discount be larger, or if it were to happen today, would it be larger if it had been yours?
Yeah, we'd give you fair market value for what it is.
Thank you.
Another thing to look at, too, is vote by mail is not big in Nevada right now, but if there's a culture shift in, say, five, six years, where people aren't coming to the polling locations or the vote centers anymore, you know, they don't need the DS 200s. We'll give you fair market value, trade in for that for maybe a couple more express votes. We're here to work with you as a county. We, we understand elections evolve, so we want to be a partner, not just a, a vendor from out of state. And one thing I wanted to mention, too, is we're not purchasing it now, but in the future. They do, they do offer where you can mark your ballot at home and put it, download it onto your phone, and when you check in, then you walk up to the ballot marking device, and you scan the barcode, and it brings up your ballot, and all you do is hit cast ballot, and you're done. You don't have to sit there and vote. You know, some jurisdictions have big ballots, so this way, I mean, it would make your whole voting experience quicker, and then you get your ballot and drop it in the ballot box. But that's the future. That's, we're not... It digitizes your sample ballot, so you can fill out your ballot on your iPad, on your phone, your smartphone. For elderly people, they can fill it out on their computer and then print out a, a, or a sheet to, to scan at the polling location.
How secure is that?
But, because you're not actually voting, so it's, consider it just like cutting a news, cutting your sample ballot out of your newspaper. So you're not doing anything until you, you print it out on the express vote and then cast your ballot. You can make any changes if you're standing in line at the voting location. You can still make changes. It's just a convenient way, especially for millennials, to bring them in and to get them more attracted to voting, so.
I want to think about that one a little while, kind of.
We didn't jump there.
I remember a couple legislative sessions ago, one of the legislators came up to me, and he goes, "Wouldn't it be cool if you could mark your ballot at home and bring your phone in and scan the barcode?" And so when we were out lobbying with all the legislators, I went up to him and I said, "Guess what? We found, we're going to purchase equipment that does that," so. And the other thing is, it's not your ballot specifically. So, for example, you'd log into the computer, to Carson's website, and I'd put 123 Main Street is my address. And then it would bring up the sample ballot for what would be 123 Main Street, not Dan Clark's specific ballot. So you'd come in, you'd check into the normal check-in process, then you'd walk up to the machine, and then they'd have to match.
Yeah. Think about that one a little bit. I'm not so, I just want to think about it. I mean, there, there, I mean, it just seems to me that there's a pretty easy fraud aspect to that, but don't worry about it right now. Okay. All right.
Because you're still marking your ballot at the polling place. I mean, you're still taking your ballot that you're reviewing at the polling place.
I don't need to go down there. I'm just, just saying. But Sue, you know, the one thing that, I'm surprised that the Secretary of State doesn't, and the other jurisdictions don't do this, because what this gentleman said, everybody wants that paper ballot. I mean, you know, I remember when we did the digital, I mean, you know, the punch cards and stuff like that, but people like that ballot. And I'm surprised that the other jurisdictions are going electronic, because all that does is foster what I've just, you know, my concerns about fraud. Okay. All right. Well, anyway, we'll see how they work out and do, go from there. Okay. Public comment on this issue? First Amendment, got any questions? Either First Amendment, elected or non-elected? Okay. All right. Let's take a motion.
I move to approve the sales order agreement with Election Systems and Software, ESNS, for the purchase and adoption of use, of use of voting equipment, related hardware, software, and maintenance and support services in the amount of $454,975.97. And to authorize the clerk recorder to renew appropriate maintenance, licensing, and support services in the manner and in the amount established in the sales order agreement.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Carried. Okay. Go forward. That wasn't that bad, was it, Sue?
Nope.
All right.
She's like, "That's the easiest I've ever had it."
I know. I could talk about voting equipment all day, so...
All right. Concluding public, public comment at the end, anybody? Let the record reflect that there's no one here, saving except for the First Amendment to talk. There's nobody here. So unless there's an objection, then we will be adjourned. Adjourned.